Hey, how you doing? How you working? Did I make you guys look good?
My transition now.
Still on the sharp.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Let's get started, like welcome everyone to the July fifteenth, twenty twenty four City Council Work Session. We would like to remind everybody, please turn off silence, all electronic devices, and we'll move right into our agenda. Item A, update on Western Electric Community Meeting. I think we have Nathan Edwards with U.S. Army Environmental Command Southeast Division. He is with us via Zoom or Teams, whatever. We've got Craig Honeycutt, our city manager, and Morgan Laster, our community engagement director.
Hey, Morgan. This very just want to give you a quick update on how this process went and about the feedback that we received. I do want to thank Public Affairs, also our interns did a great job helping out. We did a really, really good job with respect to the website and our promotion of it, had a great turnout, and again, I think the information we received will really help us moving forward, especially a lot of applications for the RAP. So, we're excited, but with that being said, I want to throw back to Nathan and Morgan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Council. I'm gonna share my screen here when I get permission, but I will. Nathan, you may not be able to see the presentation for a minute, but... So, as you all know, we have a community meeting in June on the twenty seventh that we partnered with the Army and their partners to hold the Southern Fairchild. So, this evening, Nathan and I just wanted to take a minute to give everybody an update on how that went and then what the process is moving forward. Nathan and I were able to meet this morning and talk a little bit about it and kind of time news interview yesterday and last week. So, there's some good news moving forward about the RAP too. So, I'll talk a little bit through it. So, I wanted to just give you all a little update about the process of reaching out to the community. I think we garnered a good turnout for the timeframe that we had to kind of push the information out. So, we of course did our usual outlets of social media, our media release, and then some community groups that were good partners with us, making sure it got out to their constituents as well. And then our newsletter via email, we didn't have time to get into City Works. And then we did do H brands around town, so we put them in all of our city parks and all of our walking tracks. I hit up the swimming pools at Splash Parks because they were very full of people as well, and then from at Western Electric and at Fairchild and the sock laces. And then really, of course, we shot our county and state and federal representatives, and we did have some representation, and I think some of y'all helped get some folks there too, so we appreciate that. And then the DOD sent some direct invites to other agencies and interested parties that they were aware of, and they showed up as well. So, we did hold a press conference on site there that day and garnered some pretty good news coverage even from the Allianz News. Also, the event afterwards, so we kind of were able to use that message even after the event. If those weren't on site, they did get some other information out there. And then I'll kind of recap the event, and then Nathan can talk a little bit about moving forward. So, there were about twenty-two staff on site. It really was bringing together folks from really all over the country, as well as the state of North Carolina. You know, we've been on Zoom calls for many months planning this, and then getting everyone on site was really, I think, exciting for the project. So, we had representatives, of course, from Army Environmental Command, the Army Corps of Engineers out of Savannah, and CDQ, Northland Engineering and TerraCom, which are the contractors for the Army. So, the folks that were really good to come around doing the excavation work were there. And then, of course, the city of Burlington, we had some folks. So, if a resident came in with a very detailed question, there was a content expert on site. So, it was a really neat experience to watch. We had about one hundred fifty to two hundred folks in attendance, and then I was really surprised when we did the Time News article interview last week, because last time I left, it was like thirty-eight folks had signed up to be an interested party in the RAP, but at the end of it, it was over fifty. So, that was really encouraging to be here. And then Nathan, I'll let you talk a little bit about kind of next steps, if you're ready.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
First of all, just to reiterate, this was a huge success. Typically, these things, when I talk to the Navy, they take about six to eight months in planning to get something on the ground, and we were able to pull that off in two months, and it wouldn't have been possible without Morgan and her team and the city working so closely with us. And in terms of just getting that amount of people to show up at an event, we haven't had anything of that size at any of the public meetings that we've had at any other site. In the past, these RAPs were a lot more popular, and nineteen ninety-four is when it sort of kicked off at the EPA and the Department of Defense, and a lot of our programs have matured, and the RAPs just don't get as much public support now as they used to. So, getting fifty people to sign up was also huge, and we had just a broad group from across the community, which is why we want a nice diverse representation from the community to serve on that board. This was something that we typically don't do, holding an open house before we solicit for a RAP. Normally, we just advertise in the local papers and maybe do a social media push and get people to emailing. So, this seemed very effective. It's something that we'll probably use in the future. But this doesn't count as the official signup. We're still going to do an official solicitation, so we'll advertise in your local papers, and people will be able to sign up also at the meeting that we're trying to schedule for September. And once we have that full list, we'll reach back out to everybody, and we try to come up with a good way to select a diverse board to put together. Like I said, September is what we're shooting for, for our first meeting. I had a call earlier today on getting a facilitator set up. We have a contract in place specifically for RAPs and for professional facilitation. With the amount of people that we're going to have there, we want to make sure that this is effective as possible, so that would be really helpful. All of the meetings will be open to the public, so if you get any questions about, I couldn't participate at the open house, or how can I join, all the meetings will be open for the public, and that's even after the RAP is established. So, you have the Restoration Advisory Board, the ones that are actually providing direction on how the project's moving forward, but it will be open to the public so that they can stay informed on what we're doing. And leaning on the city again to help us reach out to the community, you guys have the best network for making sure that the maximum amount of people hear about it. And all of the documents that come out of the restoration project moving forward go out for public comment. It's a requirement under the restoration program that when we get to a decision document, that the public gets a say and can comment on what remediation path we've chosen. And I think that covers it, unless I missed something, Morgan.
Yeah, I think you covered it all. Thank you. And so, it, I think at each of your desks, there's the RAP form that the Army has provided to us, that gives us a little more information. So, Nathan and Craig and I are here for any questions or comments you may have.
Yeah, those handouts are a little bit old, but like I said, we haven't stood up a RAP in a couple of decades in the Army, so we're going to be going back to the way the process was laid out and try and make it as effective as possible.
Any comments or questions? I will say that our state legislators, was everybody there or some could make it?
Some could make it.
We sent them the information, the QR codes, they had access to all the visual boards and everything that was there, so we tried to keep our elected delegation involved and informed. Any other questions, comments?
I enjoyed it. It was very detailed. I loved how everything is separated, people walk through, they can answer those personal questions. Love the turnout. I went into evening, I think it was a great turnout, parking lot was cool, so thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Nathan. Appreciate your help.
No problem, thanks.
Please say. So, Morgan, I'm assuming prior to September, we'll get informed on what the next dates are going to be once we get this?
Yes.
All right, good, thank you. Next on the agenda, item B is Community Development Block RAP twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight Consolidated Plan and twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Annual Action Plan. This time, we'll recognize Michael Blair with DRC and Jenny Olson, our panel director.
Good afternoon, or evening, Mayor Council. What I wanted to do first is just give you a little background of what's happening. All right, so we held a work session and council public hearing for this new consolidated plan and annual plan back on May sixth and seventh. HUD had not released the numbers nationwide of the grants, and we received that on May seventh, right before the public hearing. So, we couldn't really change the physical documentation that was approved by council. We tried, but we were unable to do that. We could verbally say it was a twelve thousand dollar decrease in funding, and it wouldn't come out, it would only come out basically admin and then contingency and infrastructure and relocation, depending on what we're testing. After we submitted the, what was funny was actually we, I submitted the plan in IDIS, which is the federal system for drawdowns and treasury accounts, and it came back from our HUD office that Greensboro would have to submit it. And I said, but we're not part of their consortium anymore, so why should they have any control over your annual plan and consolidated plan? And that triggered a, why didn't you do the consolidated plan? I was like, because we're no longer in the consortium, so we have to do another one, right? So, eventually, they confirmed that. So, I was right, and then started to do the consolidated plan. But what happened is because we didn't have the correct number in the public hearing, we have to do another thirty-day comment period, and actually, almost every program in the country does have to do it, unless they did, unless they had meetings after that, the public hearing after that. Most are due before May fifteenth anyway, so most meetings are in the first part of the month. So, most grantees are going to do the same exact thing. So, that's why we're here doing this again.
Just as a note, we did make that statement at the beginning.
Oh, yeah, we did. And I argued that that was sufficient, and I did not win that argument. So, that's why we're doing this. And again, yeah, the only changes really that you'll see is the rehab permanent income's a little lower, the public services, that seventy-six over nine is identical to what it was last time we had this meeting about this, and the admin is a couple of dollars, a couple thousand dollars less. Infrastructure is, I think, two or three thousand dollars less. So, it all ended up, it all shook out about the same. And, you know, so in that respect, I think it worked out fine. But what, I don't, I don't think we really have anything to discuss about budget, because that's again, what you've already approved. We want to move on to what's on the slides we have here.
Essentially, what you're, what you see here is the same repetitive slideshow that you saw at the public hearing. We just wanted to bring to your attention where those figures were adjusted slightly.
Yeah. So, we'll see this tomorrow. What do you think? Was that adjusted? Can we just highlight the adjusted figures?
Absolutely.
Let's do that. That makes it really easy for those that aren't very interested in what changed.
We'll highlight in the PowerPoint.
Okay.
Highlight to the PowerPoint.
Highlight some highlights.
But are there any questions about the process or anything? In, basically, in HUD land, we have to have this plan and everything approved by August sixteenth, so that's why we rushed to get another thirty-day time period, because we found out about this about a week and a half ago. So, that's why we're doing what we're doing.
Right. And if I have any questions on that, that will be on the agenda tomorrow.
Can we just use that term, by the land, and then I got the word over here?
HUD land?
Just HUD land.
Okay, we'll do that. I don't think they'll agree to that either.
We can take credit for that.
Everything I've argued has been basically squashed, so.
Anything else on that date?
Just that all of the updated information is on the website, so if the public has some questions about it, they can ask us there, and this will be, the public question comment period will end on... August twelfth.
Yeah, and I do want to add, though, the process, we did have over a hundred people do surveys, we had three separate public meetings that had good turnout, and we got a lot of really good feedback, and I think overall, it was a really good process for a smaller program, and there was a good, a lot, good amount of input from the community for what we're doing with the process. Good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Our next item, item C, City Burlington's General Obligation Bond and Public Educational Process. This time, we'll recognize Gregory, their city manager, and Morgan will possibly once again be engaged.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As everyone's aware, we're in the process of our public hearing, which will be tomorrow night, with a sixty-eight point five million dollars in general obligation that will be on the referendum in November. Part of our responsibility is to educate the public on exactly what we're doing and why this is needed, and we've been working very diligently with staff, very diligently with Morgan and her team, with management, to make sure that we're getting out the proper information and that we're trying to message this as quickly and easily as possible so that people will understand. We're not trying to overwhelm them, but we want to make sure that we give enough information. So, we've been working on a presentation. We did a quick presentation, our first presentation to the chamber last week, to their executive board, and also to their overall board of directors, and we wanted to present this to council tonight to make sure you understood it. If you had any questions or suggestions, if we need to add, or something we need to take out, please let us know, but again, we're the messenger on this. This is your message, and we want to make sure that we're getting that message prepared. And after this, we do want to talk about how we were going to additionally try to get this out, and if you know, groups that we can speak to, churches, community groups, lives clubs, river clubs, those type places that we could gather and share this information with them. We're working with staff and management team on a speakers kind of bureau, with the lack including city council as part of that as well, but we're really starting to ramp up, trying to do the educational process moving forward with what I know. So, with that said, I'll, Morgan will kind of go over what we presented and where we're at on our presentation, but again, we want to make sure we're on the right track.
Yeah, so, like Craig said, this is, we did last edits to the website itself, really, even today, I was still editing on it, but burlingtonnc.gov/bond. So, we've got FAQs, and we've got an overview of each bond project, so kind of telling that bond story. So, that website's out there that I will send to y'all, and you can go and take a look at, and let me know if we need to make some adjustments. And then from that, we've developed this PowerPoint slide that we're using as our go-by, and then there will be a couple of us that'll be trained to kind of be the folks that can go out and do the storytelling or, you know, informing the public in these community groups. We will, of course, do our traditional avenues of pushing out educational material, like Craig said, we, as staff, can't advocate for the bond, but we can educate the public on the bond, so that'll be our role. So, this PowerPoint, that's the basic highlights of, you know, what this is and when folks are going to vote. We kind of are breaking down the figures that you're all familiar with about the project, and then kind of explaining why we choose, why we chose a bond, and, you know, that being one of the more, really the most visibly responsible way to do these types of projects. So, then we go into our Recreation and Parks Fund and talk a little bit about the sports flex facility that we're proposing for the public to co-vote on, and, you know, a little bit about the why these projects are on the bond. Y'all have it printed out in front of you too, if that's easier. And then also the Paramount, where we highlight the expansion, as well as facility upgrade, kind of illustrating that for the community or whatever group we're speaking to. Of course, Mayor Aquatic Center highlighting, these are our very first renderings. We hope to have some more that are not all white at some point, because it looks like an actual facility. So, as soon as we get those, we'll be replacing those on the website and in this presentation. So, outlining a little bit about this project, and then we go into our street and sidewalk bond. So, talk a little bit about, you know, that small scale that we're doing, and that this is the most visibly responsible way to kind of take, jump in and kind of get back up to where we need to be with resurfacing. Sidewalks similarly, and highlighting the ADA requirement that we have as well around sidewalks. And then, and our streetscapes project in downtown, kind of talking about how that five million will add value to this bigger project that we are going to be working on as a result of our state funding with the water and sewer infrastructure. And then talking a little bit about economic impact, especially around these kind of sporting events and what that does for communities and how that can bring in those tourism dollars, to the goal of the sports flex being around tourism dollars, really. And then kind of outlining what this means for folks. So, I think we've had probably the most of them in conversation around how we tell this story, and so the website reflects similarly these figures that can help our voters understand what they're looking at. So, that is our PowerPoint presentation that we're taking out into the community.
And I do want to mention, one of the big feedbacks we got from the chamber was about the economic impact, and we're trying to really quantify that about, and trying to put a number to it as well, what a sports place and what some of these projects, that the Paramount means to our community. So, what are the ripple effects that we will receive benefits from by doing these projects and upgrades?
One of the things that I really think would be important, because we've started trying to educate and inform at the, at the beginning levels, or the elementary levels, to figure out how we need to do this and what information we need to get out there, and I think as much reference as we can make to the Recreation and Parks study that we did in two thousand twelve, that said, this is what we need, and again, in twenty twenty-four, that says we still need this, that is an extremely relevant discussion, specifically the geographical location and the amount of community input that's already been garnished to support that piece of the property. Can that information obviously be reduced down to facts and be prepared to be utilized, whether it's in written form or whatever, as we go forward?
Absolutely, yeah. We, John has spent a lot of time today really culling down the information that it'll be the entire City Works, it'll go out in the Water Bill, so it'll be the whole publication, and then we can make some more simplified versions of things that, you know, might be helpful for votes, you know, smaller cards or, you know, whatever kind of printed pieces might be helpful as folks are out talking about it in the community.
In the same sense, it's just something to ask consultants or whatever, but we can note that population change or the difference between those two states in terms of when the first one's done and the second one's done. I imagine the city road has been very substantial.
Twenty twelve is the twenty-three part.
Yeah, and that geographical area is what you're talking about.
I would love to see some type of dollar amount. So, when you break it down, when you say in the five cents on every hundred, I would love, I know that's the question for a lot of people that they have for me, exactly, how much is this going to cost us? So, when you talk about an average home, like half that dollar amount.
I think we were trying to do that, but I don't know if we hit the mark on it. We've been going back and forth that this visual is communicating right, and it may not be, if that, what is, yeah.
For me, I saw it, and I was like, yeah, that's not...
Yeah, we might need to look at that a little more.
So, I'm never sure.
So, average hundred, so I feel a hundred thousand tax value. Okay.
But we have to put something out there, is that correct? And reference to the bond of, didn't Agarson say that?
Yeah, and when folks go to vote at the ballot, it will have, it will have it on there, so it's definitely important to make sure folks are seeing it before they're seeing the ballot.
It is difficult to communicate, but obviously, the narrative on the ballot will be sort of the worst-case scenario, and when the reality of it is we're replacing...
And when the reality of it is, we're replacing a lot of old expiring debt with new debt. And we've got TDA monies now that we didn't have before. So there are already revenue streams in place to sort of, a pretty good chunk of this. So anything we put up there is going to be really arbitrary in nature. It'd be council's decision on how the taxation decided. As it was for the, the other thing that I think is important, I've received a lot of questions that the community understand, that we did not have to go this route. We could have, we could have went through installment fees as a route. This is the most fiscally conservative beneficial to the community approach by having bonds, but we could have just been asked of one, one project at a time. And I think that's a little ambiguous when you're talking to people about it.
And one of the other things that we took into consideration in preparing this slide is this is what is going to be on the tax ballot question. So we're trying to be consistent in what taxpayers would see. They're going to see for every one hundred thousand dollars value for the recreation bonds, their appropriate taxes will increase thirty-four dollars.
So that's what's going to be on.
Those two amounts. We can, we can take off a monthly amount if you think that's too confusing, but for street bonds, for every hundred thousand dollars, they will see a twenty-three dollar increase. And then we combine those two together. In total, there would be fifty-seven dollars annually for per one hundred thousand dollars. So that's why we chose, one of the reasons that we chose those numbers is, you know, not to be confusing and to have a three hundred thousand dollar home out there that's, you know, a hundred and sixty-some dollars. And then they go to the ballot and they say, well, this is only thirty-four and twenty-three. Where'd the hundred and sixty-seven come from?
Totally understand. Stay consistent. I do agree with that.
It's a complicated message.
Or it is extremely complicated.
Especially when you have two questions out there. It's not one question, it can be either or with Bob.
Thank you for that clarification too. I appreciate that.
Okay, any other questions on this process? Okay, thank you, Board. Our next item, item D, is North Central Almanzt Fire Department Land Lease Extension. Just time we'll call on Craig to make that and fire chief Matt Horrigan to discuss this topic. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. So I just made a credit thing to this.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll. We have a slide.
So we got, oh, a little bit, I'm surprised with this, but I'm not sure anybody currently here knew this was in place, but in nineteen eighty-three, the city boroughs entered a lease agreement on a two-point-six acre piece of property out adjacent to Lake Camac with North Central Almanzt Fire Department. So they constructed a fire station to protect that district. At the time, it was a fifty-year lease that it signed. They just set it to fire in twenty thirty-three. So North Central has come to the city and has received some funds for some hidden improvements to that facility, some additions and improvements to the facility and want to be certain that their investment there goes beyond twenty thirty-three. So their interest is to either extend that lease for another fifty-year period or potentially have the opportunity to purchase that property from the city. So the mayor and I met with their board representative and their fire chief who have put this in the form of a formal request. We bring it to you tonight just to make you aware of this agreement and to have some discussion around what the intention of the property is and how to pay us and review that.
And we've had conversations with Bob and Bob has no issues, has not any problems or issues as far as work quality or buffering issues with respect to Lake Camac. And they really have been a good neighbor and a good tenant on the property.
Yeah, mine's having, they don't do any training or any of those types of activities when they fire station.
Their lease, their current lease is pretty restrictive about what they can and can't do on the property simply because of the status of Lake Camac. And our, our knowledge they've provided by that for the last four years of them, of currently.
And they're okay with either option. They just want to kind of ensure that if they do the investment now, that it is going to be a long-term investment for them. So they're fine with either option, but they just wanted to make sure that, that there was that timeframe there.
With the, or with the, another two options, is, is the plan just to move forward with extending the lease?
That, that would probably be the easiest and simplest to do. David and I had a conversation as well that that would have to be a public hearing that we do set because statutory, even at least above ten years, you have to have a public hearing.
I think the idea is just to figure out whether or not you agree with the authority.
Right. We, we didn't want to.
If they're going to be extending, or if they would like to have some ideas they have. Well, I certainly understand that. If they're, if they're going to be making significant investments, that makes sense that they would protect the tenure of that. Kind of this, at the same time, it's adjacent to our water supply. So the lease does give us more, a little more authority over the use. So I would certainly support the leasing myself, I don't know if everyone else.
Sure, say that again, sorry.
I would support the leasing aspect of it.
I was wondering, what's your timeframe here? I said, did you know? The current lease is, it's expired till twenty thirty-three. I think they're interested in going ahead and making some improvements relatively soon. So I think they'd like to answer soon as they either.
If it wasn't there, I might have a little time. I'd say I'd think that a little bit more, you know what I mean?
Sure.
You, you, something like that, that wouldn't, you'd delay somebody, I wouldn't like that time.
Staff can still progress along those lines, given us the time to sort of digest everything. Obviously, there's going to be a contractual agreement that will need to be viewed at that point in time. So I think that, that'd be very surely they would understand that.
I think their biggest interest is going to make sure if we had interest in the EVO one, you know, and, and supporting their, our payments.
There is not any need by the city board, is there?
Not, not, we're, we're, we, that's what we checked, yes, sir. That's what we checked, yes, sir.
Okay, as long as the city doesn't have any, you know, intended use.
Yes, sir. Shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah.
We'll move forward in that direction, but maybe everybody brought that city.
All right, good. Moving on, item D, voluntary particulars annexation request. This is an assembly of properties on the west side of Highway sixty-one. Parcel IDs one oh six nine four nine, one oh six nine six one, one oh six nine six six, one oh six nine six seven, one oh six nine six eight, one oh six nine seven zero, one oh six nine seven three, one oh six nine seven six, one oh six nine seven seven, two two five four nine one, and two two five four nine two. This time we'll call Jamie Lawson to review this slide.
Good evening, Mayor and National members. So in front of you tonight is a court session item. This is sort of tied to a rezoning item that you'll hear about a little bit later that went in front of the planning zoning commission. But essentially, we received a voluntary annexation request for the eleven parcels. It is roughly a hundred ninety-six acres in size on the west side of Highway sixty-one. You mentioned the parcels. Essentially, this is tied to a rezoning request. These properties are currently located in Guilford County and are also seeking to be rezoned within City eleven from agricultural to medium industrial. The matter is for your consideration tonight, this area is identified in on the Rock Creek area of Guilford County's comprehensive plan. And you have in front of you a resolution to put this on for the August twentieth public hearing, so you choose.
Okay. So the request is to set a public hearing process.
That's correct.
Yeah. Does everyone, everyone good with that? I will say, I know we've all probably received some emails or notification from some historic preservation groups that are interested in this. I think it would be important that staff could communicate to those that this is merely an annexation request. This is not a site plan or an end use or any of that, because there seems to be a little confusion, at least the way I interpret it. So certainly the annexation is really going to have to be a variable.
That has already let them know that that is the situation. And you referenced the letters as well.
Jamie, are you anticipating the rezoning on the same night?
Yes, I was going to mention that too.
The rezoning will be the same night?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next item, item F, advisory boards and commission appointments. This time we'll recognize our public information specialist, John Vernon.
Hello, Mayor. I think you had your packets and I sent an additional applicant and a reminder sheet on Thursday. And I can help you walk you through any questions you might have if I have the answer to you.
I think to sort of start working on these and get the accomplishments that we need to, as much as we can get done, I think it's, there's several of them that are pretty easy. So if we could start with the easy ones and kind of talk about those and try to knock those out, and then there are a few that are going to be a little more comprehensive, there's a few that have several vacancies that are going to require a little more comprehensive discussion. So is everybody okay, we'll sort of jump around and look at the easy ones first? So I think just my notes at least, we've got Burlington Housing Authority seemed relatively easy. Is that just one reappointment, is that correct?
Yeah, that's Melinda Freeman.
Yep, Melinda Freeman. Is there any comment or feedback about the reappointment of Melinda Freeman to that and that sort of resolves that? Is everybody, everybody good with that? All right, so city, that's good. Next, I think CPAT, CPAT, we've got two reappointments.
Two reappointments, yes. Churchill and Community Love of Aris.
Yeah, and I think both of those have been pretty active and have good stewards of that. How's everybody feel about the reappointments suggested? I certainly don't have any problems with it.
I feel good about that. And also with the new one, I, I would propose a very positive one. You know, if you use the third, you let somebody have a problem, you know, with her, that would fill the slate for that, it'd be.
Correct, because we have one of them seen, so that would fill that over.
Yeah. If somebody had a problem, very positive, I certainly.
She's been waiting.
So that knocks that one out?
Yep.
All right. Let's look at Almanzt County Library Board. It's one vacancy there. Logan said it will be the vacancy and I know that several that were interested in that. Does anyone have a preference on?
Notice, notice the one applicant that Joanne Rule lives at the library of Elon University. You know, for qualifications, you know, I mean, I looked at the other two, that certainly, that certainly, certainly seems, you know, you know, come from the, you know, the folks there. I don't know, I didn't put that name in discussion, so.
What's wrong, Leon? I'm trying to.
Water is dead, Larry. Yeah. And Bob, on that, on that applicant, was that the only board that that applicant?
I think we go back and see.
Yes, it is. Did anyone else have any thoughts or opinions on that?
Mr. Mayor, I don't see that one on page. Sorry.
It's the last in the, in the tab that is H to R, it's the last applicant.
Thank you.
I'll do a follow-up on that if you got experience on that, that I'm going to be helpful.
So am I reading this correctly, that we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven applicants for one vacancy? The people on the left are in there.
There were multiples that applied for that, but they also applied, there were a lot that also applied for multiple others, best I remember. Is that right, John?
Yes.
She only applied for that issue, not all?
That's the only one she applied.
She only applied for?
Who, which one? I think I, I.
The Lady Lady Convention.
Rule?
Rule was ruled. So yes, there's one vacancy, seven applicants and several, at least two of those, or three of those, I'm aware, applied for multiples. So the general rule, is it general, is that right? Is the testing on the board was a bad one?
Tell them, I don't know which one you'll come back to next, but I'll just look at the ones who applied for reappointment. In fact, I think we follow a thing that the people who serve applies for reappointment. You know, we, you know, we were inclined to rip one and I, looking at recreation parks, there's three there, four vacancies, three have applied for reappointment. So if the amount are just left in one additional, that if everybody's, you know, satisfied with the reappointment.
Yep, I had that one on my easy list. So is everybody good with the, the library, with that one? Okay, yeah. So agreed with recreation and parks, there's just one, okay, the, the, three that applied for reapplication have certainly been good members and there's one coming off, Christopher Wyman. So there's one reappointment or one vacancy there.
We used Kathy Holland anywhere.
Not yet, but she's, absolutely. And Kathy's one that applied for multiples.
Yeah, it was, it usually.
She basically said, I want to get involved, I'll do whatever you need me to do.
And also Katie Harper.
Agreed. Those, those two really stepped out there and said that they were certainly interested to serve.
I will say I'd go to Jeff Smythe's office, that he applied for certain ones that said, put me anywhere you guys need me.
Jeff Smythe?
Yes.
So recreation and parks, that's another one. Obviously four vacancies, three reappointments that we talked about. So that's one spot and there are eight applicants there.
Like Gil Anderson, good guy.
Gil Anderson?
He is, yeah.
I had you.
Yeah, Gil, yes. And Bill, that's the only one he applied for. So if we're good stewards of our applicants that are willing to serve about anywhere, we would take that one and plug it in and that. So if we're good stewards of our applicants that are fully deserved about anywhere, we would take that one and plug it in.
Yeah.
Is everybody good with that?
Push forward.
Bill Anderson.
Bill Anderson.
Push forward. Recreation and Parks. Is everybody good with that one?
Yes.
All right, so we'll plug Bill in on that one.
Kathy, you're going to say a little bit? Make a difference.
All right, so, how many do we have on the easy ones?
Public transit, we have one vacancy. So there's two reappointments and one vacancy, can we go down?
Yes, that one is easy. We've got two reappointments, Moses Corbett and Badiya Brown. So if everybody's good, we'll slot him in for reappointment, so everybody's good with that? And then that would leave one vacancy, Mike Mills is coming off. And certainly, we've got a pool that we can choose from, you know, to fill that one. So the applicants for that one, Katie Harper, Kathy Holland, and John Paesman. Those are the three that are applying for that one spot.
There's also Austin Dorby, he was the one that was just added.
In the other half? Yep, that's right.
He applied for the public transit.
He applied for public transit, that's one of the ones he had on board.
Right.
He's the one that came on Thursday.
Yeah.
That would be Katie Harper and Kathy Holland. And some of these other boards, you know, that said they wouldn't serve anywhere, you know, this new applicant for the public transit.
Is that right, Austin? Is that right?
Austin Dorby.
I'm very good with that? So we'll plug Austin in for that seat when that one's done. And we've got, so a moderate or not, not too hard would be a tree appearance commission. We've got two vacancies there, is that right, John?
Yes.
So we've got two vacancies on tree appearance.
Right. I have two names to look at, which usually serve by Arbor and also Steve Warren. For those who, that I can throw the names out to get the conversation going.
Well, I had Elizabeth Circle on that, so I agree. So is everyone, is everybody good with Elizabeth? And any thoughts on the remaining? Do you bring in Stephen Warren?
Yeah, Stephen Warren, Elizabeth, that is true. Yeah, he, yeah. So I guess Stephen Warren's preferred, is historic preferred.
And there was a Katie, now I had a note on that, I might be wrong, Katie Snyder. Is that one?
She's on the board now, Katie Snyder.
That's right, okay, okay, gotcha.
You know, since, you know, they want to wait on, you know, Stephen, Stephen Warren maybe, maybe. But you know, historic preservation, I've got some names, you know, pencil in, even others can base it on wait on that Stephen Warren.
Just those ones, did you request it's?
Yeah, Stephen Warren requested tree appearance and historic preservation with preference.
Well, what about, what about Katie Harper on that?
Good, yep.
On tree appearance, yep. Would everybody be good with that? So we'll have Elizabeth Dennis and Katie Harper.
Historic, so we cover tree, tree appearance.
Yeah, now historic pres-, let's play the tape historic preservation, because it's, that's more complicated. We've got two reappointment requests, C4, C6, Frankdink and Russ, and Ross Keller. Is everybody good with the reappointments on those?
I'm good.
Okay. So we have three vacancies that we have to fill in addition to those. You said you asked me?
Yeah, I, I got, well, Stephen Warren is the one who, you know, considered for the tree appearance, Stephen Warren. And I had that as a, as a preference, you know. That one, Stephen Warren, that and the other two, Julianne Siler and John Paesman.
Is everybody okay with that, to fill those three seats? John Paesman, Julianne Siler, Stephen Warren. If so, they'll get historic preservation for. Just a question, on that board, how much training does that new member come on board? How's that, how's that work?
So when the new payments come on, staff will do an informal training at the first meeting where everyone's together. And then there are required training sessions, the school of government puts on training sessions, as does the state historic preservation. You also have the requirement to complete trainings as a result of being part of the certified local improvements. So there's ongoing in-person and virtual trainings all year long. We'll share those with board members to see which ones they want to participate in and obviously the requirements. We will make sure that's on that floor.
So they'll be told that, that wants to know that which is, they need to be able to deal with.
In addition to that, last year we had the attorney who helped with board adjustments, Francis Raspberry, down the road. They did a presentation for the board adjustments as well as any historic parties that are on the quasi judicial hearing process. Which is helpful to you.
Yeah. Okay, does everybody good with those three? David, can you real quickly explain what that individual, the difference?
What y'all do on a regular basis on y'all's resumes is legislative. As a practical matter, up until the time that you started to have your assistancy say, well, you weren't even required to articulate your reasons for voting one way or the other, you just had to vote. And it's typically goes by majority on quasi judicial. It's a different process, it's judicial really in a lot of ways, your board is acting under judicial capacity. And the witnesses are sworn in, they had to have standing, some sort of special interest in relation to the subject matter, even the verb. In addition to that, the board in its rulings has to articulate and make find deeds of fact, conclusions of law, for a public shit basis to rule. Furthermore, from the, across judicial hearing, the appeals go to the superior court of Alvin County. And from that standpoint, it's certainly advantageous to have someone, one or more people on the board who are familiar with judicial process and Houston making decisions based on written findings of fact and conclusions of law.
Do we have legal staff at those meetings?
No, the city, I represent the city of Burlington, if it is a party to the action. We have over the course of the last three years, have you watched the services of Francis Raspberry, Reyes, who comes in and he serves as counsel for the board itself. And he'd be very helpful in explaining some of the processes, and they have questions right there in here.
Okay, so with the addition of those three names, everything historic preservation covered. Let's, let's look at one of the more difficult ones, traffic commission, let's take a look at that. John, we've got a lot of need there, right?
Yes, there are five spots to fill.
So we have two vacancies, in addition, we've got three that are rotating along.
We've got, we've got four, two of the existing applicants are already filled, there are four spots for, there are four applicants for five spots already, just so you know.
Yep, Paesman and Harper.
Paesman, Paesman and Harper, yeah.
So you down to what, you got, you got Aunt Barker, Holland, I kind of like, really, I kind of like to see Kathy actually serve on board adjustment.
I would agree with that, I think she would quickly be ideal for that.
I'll put her down on that, that's a privilege.
And the other, the other three, you know, Ben Beth and Jeff, you know, that's left, they're the ones that have the interest in the traffic commission. Unless somebody had a problem with them, that'd be, that'd be three seats there.
Yep, that's three of the five.
And you still have two vacancies left, is that right? So I know someone that wanted, that said something about being wrong here, but did not fill out an application. So do I need to go back to them tomorrow and still fill an application?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do that.
We could add those three and then work to fill the other two. We've done that in the past, and we're still short. Let me say this, we're doing some work across the state, this is not, this is not our situation. There's a number of communities now facing the challenge of getting enough people to volunteer to be on these commissions. So it's, I think we advertised, and probably if we was thinking back on board, what else we might have to do to continue to separate, to call the people on these commissions.
We've got a good couple of applicants, it's just they don't offer them, it's not equally spread across each board.
Yeah, this is probably the largest group overall that I've seen.
For the mandate here, we might have more. Brian, I know that you mentioned that you voted for lower the board number, am I misremembering that? At some point, is that the only one? No. No.
All right, so that'll give us five on that board. We should have two vacancies.
I'm working on one.
Ronnie's working on one, so we still need to do some outreach for the remaining one. Is everybody good with that? Okay. And then Planning and Zone. Planning and Zone, we have two reappointments, Lee, Ron, and Patricia Gamble as an alternate, is that?
She would like to be considered for a full, appointed to a full.
Okay, I thought I read that.
Move her to alternate to a regular seat, Matt Gamble.
That's, that was her request. So we've got...
We don't have any ETJ applicants.
No, it's...
That's a difficult one to do.
I think we might have some absentee issues on that board now. I was talking about, talking about...
I thought it was that, actually, one person wasn't showing up today, so we're doing...
Amber.
It was a different one.
And a different one?
Yeah, I'm sure about different one, about different one too. Would you like us to take a look at that and check on attendance and get back with you on that? Well, just saying, yeah, this, this one is, this, I don't recall this being a vacancy at one time, really great on this board, which is a pretty tough board to run, you're watching new people on. It is, that one's, that is new top. P and Z and board adjustments, far as, really like to have somebody with previous board experience or commission experience. That those two are almost gradual level boards and commissions, so I like a little bit more. Yeah, let's get, let's do that, can we, is everybody comfortable with letting, maybe give us a little bit of information about attendance and whatnot? And let's be sure we've got that board on solid foot.
That's good, we...
Okay. So we'll hold off, Planning and Zone on P and Z.
That's like, is it only left board adjustment?
The board adjustments is what's left.
Yes, that, that, you got two apply for reappointment. Of course, one of the, is Steve Hyman, I guess that's going to be a, one of ETJ. Mark Kennedy applies for reappointment, I don't know, one of anybody else on the board.
He's the next one, he's the next one, he's a former with the IRS, a hearing officer, so he is used to conducting evidentiary hearings, there's been no failure.
So is this where you want to put Kathy Holland as well?
Yep, Kathy, and also got Eric Grant, because he served on, he can do some board adjustment sometimes. Yeah, he's very familiar with it. We got Mark Kennedy, Kathy Holland, Eric Grant, and also Chandler Woods. He said he might be considered for the board adjustment, do you know Chandler Woods? And so Chandler would be, you know, such a...
I don't see his name.
That was, that was a note that he applied for the long one, that's from, from up, and he applied for P and Z, but I've been talking about being, he's a board official, there's a note that you mentioned about that.
He is an attorney with the Smith and Giles Law Firm and, and actually his law partner is Giles, who's rotating off as chairman of the BBOA, so I thought...
And what is his name here?
Chandler Woods.
Then with that, those five, so that board is, that would be four.
We've got four plus the...
Got Hyman.
Hyman would be the ETJ, so that's a five we have. We've got Eric Grant, Mark Kennedy, Chandler Woods, Kathy Holland, and Hyman.
So gets, gets the full seat and the ETJ covered.
Yes, I'd be glad to try to find another similar.
Means there are tickets beyond those four?
Yes, that's correct.
Just the two alternates. So there are, there are four, there are four seats that are open, is that right, John?
There are four full seats that are open and two alternate seats that are open.
So the four full seats would be Kennedy, Grant, Holland, and Woods, is that right?
Yes.
Yep. And then there's an ETJ seat, which would be Hyman. So that leaves two alternates, so that's what we need.
So the only thing we have left is the one that I'm searching and one more, is that it?
The one that you're searching for traffic commission and one more for traffic. And then getting some information on P and Z and we addressing it to be sure it's on solid ground.
Okay, so we got one in traffic. And then one in Planning and Zone.
So that gets us kind of through. Yeah, here we go. John, are we good?
We're good.
The only little guy she left hanging with is a couple of them, traffic and then P and Z. Thank you. Good, good job, I'm gonna let everybody go. All right, next item, item G is board and commission reports, Planning and Zone, P and Z has two items.
P and Z had two items on their...
P and Z had two items on their agenda. The first one was a rezoning request, um, is at the corner of Medden and Traplough Road, it's the gas station that exists there. Um, this is a, a pretty simple request, essentially, um, they're currently zoning neighborhood business and they're applying to go to general business limited use. Uh, the limited uses are specifically for the car wash that exists and the, um, being stored with gasoline. They don't wanna change any of the uses that are there. What they wanna do is add an electric, um, message sign, which is currently not allowed in the neighborhood business, so they want to be able to be, um, modernized, just like the rest of the, uh, gas stations and convenience stores, um, throughout the city. Now, this item was heard, uh, as a June twenty fourth planning and zoning commission, um, it was voted in favor unanimously, uh, and staff has this on for the August twentieth meeting as well.
Okay. And that intersection, they're the only active business on that intersection, they don't have a lot of. That one's, I'm sure that one's starting to get a lot of ratings, though.
Yeah. And then the second item I alluded to earlier, this is tied to the annexation request, um, that will be put on for the August twentieth meeting. Uh, there are, again, eleven properties, um, located on the west side of Highway sixty one, um, they are seeking to, um, be rezoned consistent with the city of Burlington zoning district, um, they're currently in Guilford County as ag, and they're seeking to go to medium industrial with a limited use, uh, rezoning. Um, initially, they came in with the request and it went in front of the planning and zoning commission in May, that was recommended at that time, four to one. They then added this other parcel in that's highlighted in orange, uh, making the total acreage hundred, just under two hundred, a hundred ninety-six. Um, planning and zoning, um, took a look at this one again, we had to renotice and be advertised because of that additional parcel, um, and the planning and zoning commission recommended, uh, the rezoning four to two. So, um, staff is recommending the rezoning request as it's consistent with the Guilford County Comprehensive Plan, um, we do not have a site-specific development plan associated with this, uh, at this point, they're just eliminating the theater use under the medium industrial and the remaining, um, uses are still, uh, included. You also mentioned the historic, uh...
That addressing, that will come up aside from that, or not?
That's correct, yeah. Or any, any discussion we can have with developer on that property.
Right. And I, and I will say, this one is on East Table, North Carolina's radar, too, I don't know if everyone saw that, but, of course, this, this is, yeah, 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 so we're, we're very fortunate to have a potentially big project there now. So, okay, everybody good with that?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jamie. Our next item is city manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, I know one thing I do want to mention to you today, as councilors aware, back in twenty twenty-one, Alamance County received a direct allocation from the state to fund a new emergency operations center, and that was direct allocation for fifteen million dollars, which was to include a co-located nine-one-one center with the city of Burlington in Alamance County. Cost for the facility has greatly risen in the past three years, and the county has asked that the city fund one point three million for a hardened server room, and that really is to protect its communication server, uh, it's currently, uh, that building is listed as a category two, our current, uh, server room is, is, is protected in the current PD at a category four. Uh, so the, the greater the number, the better, all that as far as, uh, protection of it. Uh, again, we believe that for necessary for continuous operations, that it really does need to be in a category four rated facility. The county stated that they felt it was an unnecessary cost at this time, uh, they were comfortable with the category two, and they have asked that the city, we feel like that strongly about it, that we should pay the one point three million dollars for the upgrade, um, on our end. Originally, the thought process was that the fifteen million dollars from the state would fund the costs associated with meeting the emergency operations needs of the county and to fully fund the co-located nine-one-one. However, due to the incredible increases in construction, this amount will fall short of what is necessary. The city of Burlington was prepared to spend five hundred thousand for fiber to the site as that was a direct benefit for us, but we're not prepared at this time to, uh, forth request the one point three million dollars additional. In our discussions with the county, this may not be the only cost share that they're looking for, uh, as they're still in the process of, of trying to get the building designed, so there may be some additional costs that would come down the road that we would be asked to share with. Um, we would like recommend to the city council that since this has been a direct Alamance County emergency management proj- project, with co-located nine-one-one is only a part of the project, it's not the entire project, uh, at this time, we inform the county that we would like for them to continue with the design work for a co-located nine-one-one, but at this time, we will not be participating as we have not budgeted these additional costs, uh, moving forward. And again, right now, we have updated nine-one-one equipment, everything's working well, and, and Chief and Rachel, if I'm missing something, please jump in. Um, we really do wanna thank, uh, county staff, they have just been fabulous to work with, uh, we've been working really well together, uh, we're also working within right now, uh, to implement a county-wide CAT system, which is computer aided dispatch, uh, that will really benefit all of Alamance County and put everybody under the same platform, uh, right now, there's separate platforms now. Uh, this is a, a federally allocated project that we've been working with, Congresswoman Toshay, I always say, wishy, I'm sorry, I, I always say it wrong, uh, and Senator Phillips, uh, who's really has that in his allocation, uh, at the federal level, or federal level. This should be a seven million dollar receipt that Alamance County should get and will directly benefit all our municipalities, uh, and I appreciate the work Rachel has done, uh, work, uh, delegation and also with our consultants, but it, it, this time, that we feel like we're very excited about is just the additional costs moving forward, uh, with the current proposed nine-one-one center.
And I think it's important to just note that we, we're looking at it from co-located nine-one-one, the county's got a very comprehensive need that they're working on, thus the, the level of the grant that they receive. Um, theirs is for a, a facility for all emergency management, and, um, so we're looking at one little piece that's ours, and we've walked along this journey with them the entire time, as they're trying to figure out, um, therefore, um, the broader need of what the county's trying to do. So, um, I think it's drilling it down is that the one point three million, we don't have budgeted, and we've got a lot of projects that we're in the middle of, and it doesn't mean we don't wanna move in there with them, it just means that you guys keep moving in, Rachel, move in, design appropriately, and at what point in time we have, uh, the budget allocated, we will join at that point in time. So it does not have any bearing on the money that they receive from the state, um, and we've talked about everyone involved to be sure that, um, everyone's expectations were met, and I think we've checked those boxes.
Is that, is it level two versus a level four, or have anything to do with accreditation? Chief?
Uh, it probably does give it an instruction in particular, yes. Yep. So, you know, it was, it was gonna be, uh, new and it was gonna be convenient, but we, we do not have a dynamic need.
No, sir.
We're, we're fully functional, so this was, um, and I think if you really are looking back, there was a point in time that there was maybe some hope or ambition that a project like this could be located at the Western Electric Site. And, uh, obviously, once we started down that path, um, we realized that that one's gonna be, not gonna meet the deadline, uh, to spend the money there, so, um, I think this is just in everybody's best interest at this point.
And, and again, county staff has been wonderful to include us in on planning and design work up front, uh, we appreciate the work that Kenyon's done and Rachel's done, um, Scott Bibler's done a great job on this, we have all really wanted this to work, uh, again, it's just the additional costs that have been associated within this time, and in, in all honesty, there's probably more costs that's gonna be associated with this coming down the road that they're not even aware of yet, so that we were probably been asked to share.
Change orders, have they even started to show up yet?
The fiber design's not even done yet.
Yep. So, but that's complicated for them.
It, it is, it, they needed our yes or no, basically, so that they could move forward, um, in, in their process, and, and, um, we, again, really do appreciate the county and, and their willingness to work with us.
Everybody good with that?
Um, we'll let the county know and, and, you know, that we brought it to you and, and the consensus was that we will, uh, not be co-locating at this time, however, we do want to continue with the design process for possible future co-location.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you, Greg. David, I think you go with questions.
I'd ask the city council to vote to go into closed session at this time pursuant to NCGS one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, eight three, to consult with the council concerning handling of judicial actions and claims, including one, George Cameron Pulliam versus Dylan Keith Davis, City of Burlington, Frank Harden Hodgens, Alman's County Superior Court case twenty-three, CBS two oh five three, and Gretchen Gustoff versus Kevin Overman, Alman's County Superior Court, twenty-four, CBS four seventy-four.
Is there a motion to go into closed session per county request?
I make a motion to go into closed session for the State Department.
Can it be just a certain amount of time?
Yeah, ten minutes.
Okay. I'll send that to you now.
Oh, yes.
Hold up, paper.